Good evening and welcome to the Acton School Committee meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at five o'clock, and we will begin with the Pledge to the Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting tonight, I'd like to take a few minutes to pay tribute to Jim Driscoll, who left this world a little earlier this week after a long and valiant battle with cancer. Jim was by far one of the most beautiful human beings I have ever known. His love for the town of Acton and the people in it were shown every day in the life that he lived. He took great pride in Acton Elementary School, its staff, buildings, and grounds. He always gave credit to AES for the foundation his two girls got in beginning their educational experience, and continued to speak with pride of their accomplishments as they went on to earn multiple degrees and have much success in their careers. Jim was a member of the school committee and played a vital role in the decision to enter into a contract with Safford for our high school students. He followed Acton kids after they left AES, cheering them on at athletic events and recognizing their accomplishments. His passion for the success of our Acton kids was evident in all the ways he supported programs and budgets for the school. It's actually because of Jim's arm twisting and encouragement that I made the decision to run for a seat on the Acton School Committee. Jim has served in multiple other capacities within the town. He was a selectman, member of the warrant finance committee, planning board, and other town committees. His most recent town position is animal control officer and deemed him to many residents in the community who perhaps had never had the opportunity to get to know him on a more personal level. By far, he was Acton's best-ever ACO, going above and beyond at all hours of the day and night. Jim began the What's Up in Acton Facebook page to give people an opportunity to share events, successes, and experiences with each other. And then beyond that, he initiated the What's Up in Acton Community Spirit Awards, which has recognized many citizens for their various contributions to the town of Acton. He loved the Neighbors Helping Neighbors Initiative that the girls at the town hall started and was a constant supporter of that program. He could be seen arriving at the town hall with a colo of turkeys or transporting warm clothes that had been collected to shelter to those in need. I'm blessed to have known Jim and called him a Jim friend for many years. As a lifelong resident of Acton, I can't think of any other who has impacted our town with his ethics, generosity, humility, intelligence, dedication, and genuine caring spirit as Jim Driscoll has. He will be forever remembered as a positive light shining down on our little towns. If you want to pay honor to Jim in the days ahead, I know he would want you to pay it forward with random acts of kindness, checking on neighbors, and doing whatever you can to make Acton the best, the very best it can be. Rest in heavenly peace, Jim. You are greatly missed already. Please join me now for a moment of silence. Good job. We'll go on now with our agenda. Do we have any adjustments to be adjusted tonight?
We do not have any adjustments, and we will be meeting in executive session immediately following the open public session.
Okay. Any comments from the public?
Yes, sir. I promise to keep this short, but talking about Jim, I worked at this school when Jim was on the school committee, and we were very close together. And he was a big part of getting a playground out there for the kids who just come up front out there. And one thing that Jim really wanted was that basketball court out there. And so we built the basketball court, and I was down there working on the playground one Saturday. Jim comes down with Polly and Jay, which at that time were about this big, and me being a super athlete, that all year. The girls wanted to play some, whatever you call it, basketball, you know? And boy, those two girls beat the crap out of me. And I can still picture Jim holding onto his stomach laughing, because those girls had a piece of that in there. That's just how you said it was.
Any other comments from the public? All right, Jen, let's move on to number three, which is our Celebration of Learning, and that's from the girls' soccer team, a tenth and sixth grade camping trip. Two celebrations to remember. Do you want one?
Hello, I'm Kelsey LaDaw-Johnson. I coached the girls' soccer team this year. I'm also the athletic director. So I'm just to share a little bit about our soccer season. I asked the girls at our end-of-season celebration to write down two things for me. I asked them to write down something that they learned, doesn't necessarily have to be soccer, and something that they enjoyed. And so I kind of put those into a slideshow to share with you, so that way it's not just what I think they've done and what I think they've learned, it's feedback from the students themselves. And some of the stuff they said I thought was really meaningful and why I love to coach and be involved in athletics. So first, we'll start off with things that we've learned. And I paraphrase some of these because some of them were similar and just shortening them up a little bit. But to be more confident in my speaking, that was one that surprised me, and that I could definitely see being on the field, you know, you can't, you can't necessarily use your inside voice, you know? We're always talking about PBIS at school, but using a louder voice and being confident in using that and using that voice to communicate. Learn more about your teammates, just who your peers are. You're not always friends with everyone you're on the team with when you come together as a team, and that's really cool to learn about your peers. A lot of, a lot of tricks and skills, so like just working on their, almost a basketball, I'm in basketball now, a lot of their soccer skills, working with their feet, how they can use their feet to control the ball, how to control my kicks instead of just walloping and going. We're working on like how we can use special parts of our feet to help us aim where the ball goes. Passing together is important. We learned, especially as the season went on and saw that when we make those two nice connected passes, those fluid passes, that we can be more successful. Dedication to the team, dedication to yourself, dedication to each other. I just, dedication all around is great, and I love that more than one of the athletes on the team wrote dedication down, wrote something they learned this season. To work together as a team, teamwork is really important. Teammates can disagree, but we will work it out as a team. It's okay to know that you can be in a group with someone and you can disagree, and you can work that out, you can find a common ground. The importance of communication and teamwork, how important that communication is on the field and how you communicate it on the field. If you're not friends at the start, you probably will be friends at the end. That's a sentence I took from, straight from the page, and I, that one warmed my heart. If you're not friends at the start, you probably will be at the end. And as someone who's been on many sports teams myself, I see the truth of that. I might not be best friends with everyone on the team, but now I have something in common with them, and I have something to relate to them with. And I thought that was really nice that this teenager, young teenager, was able to see that too. What we enjoyed the most, a lot of these, there's a lot of similarities on this one. The bus rides with teammates, bus rides are always a really good time. Something that I try to do as a coach is have a quiet bus ride on the way to the game. I always grew up in my high school sports having silent bus rides to the game, just a little bit of that, like a little bit of focus, a little bit of, you know, what's coming next, preparing for the game. And then the bus ride home, a little more relaxing, a little more fun, especially if we worked really hard and we did really well and we were proud of ourselves. They, you know, you deserve, everybody deserves that celebration when they work hard. Playing in the games, I mean, all that practice for what, you know, to compete. Getting closer with friends, that's something we always want to see. Creating memories to look back on, that's one that touched my heart, just like middle school, thinking about how just creating cool memories right now and make sure. And I feel like that's a great way to wrap up. One of the reasons why we do athletics and extracurriculars is just so, one of the reasons is so that people can have a place where they belong and have a group they belong to, and I thought that was very beautiful. And to end, I have our team picture. That's our crew in full glory. So we did not win any games this season, but the girls worked really, really hard, and there were definitely some marked improvements from the beginning of the season. And it was really nice because our very first season, very first game of the season and our very last game of the season was against the same team. So we were able to see some growth there. We also had, we played the same team back-to-back, and there was a little bit of a span, there was some rescheduling that went on, but we played Thornton Academy back-to-back. So we played them and then at the end or beginning of one week, and then we played them the end or beginning of another week. So there's a little bit of time, and the coach came up after, came up after the game and said to me, oh my goodness, you girls, they've improved so much, like I can see that they've been practicing, I can see they've made these changes. I said, thank you so much, you were the last team we played. So the fact that you're saying that means a lot, and there's a lot happening. And the girls definitely noticed that at the end of the season, and that was something that I cherish as a coach, is when the athletes realize their improvements and they can feel that confidence and that pride in themselves. So that's our girls' soccer season this fall at AES.
Hey, girls!
Could I put a little, just a little comment that as a spectator, every single time that team walked off the field, there were a bunch of them holding hands with smiles, and it didn't matter if they won or lost, they all just walked off as a team, and, and they, they moved on to the next thing. And that's what I appreciated, because I, I do have other grandkids who are just as competitive as this one, who are not as, as, you know, happy when they lose. And I have to say, this team together was awesome to watch, so congratulations for that great sportsmanship.
And these were sixth, seventh, and eighth graders? Sixth, seventh, and eighth, all, yeah, we had all three grades for the middle school this year for the girls, so we had lots of interest, thankfully, so we were able to have a nice big team. So hopefully again next year, you know, tell your friends, your younger friends, they'll come in. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job, Kelsey. Well, it doesn't want me to jump on, let me give you one more shot here. Oh, there I am. Okay, let me focus this. Okay, we move down to Dennis, and then I'll come back and hit play. So I'm the second Celebration of Learning, and we've been doing the sixth grade camping trip for quite a while, and historically, when I, when I've been doing the sixth grade camping trip, we'll do an overnight, and we always use Sevago Lake State Park because it's set up very nicely for group camping, and it's very private, and we have a key, we get to combo to the gate, we get to go way back to the corner of the park, and we really feel alone, and it's a Thursday night, and we are kind of alone when we're out there, and it's pretty remote, it's a beautiful lake. Well, and then normally, the second, we do some team building, and then the second day, we would generally climb a mountain or do a hike or do something pretty physical. In this sixth grade class this year, we have a young man who's in a wheelchair, so that didn't seem appropriate. So we, we were able to connect with the main outdoor learning initiative on Macworth Island and dovetail the two. So the first day was at Sevago Lake State Park into the evening, and then we took the minivans over to, over to Macworth Island, which was really, really super cool for the kids because it was very different. And the theme was to do some, some research, get a specimen. You'll see in the, in the video, we used the canoes that we got with our COVID relief money, and we got some specimen from freshwater, then we go to the ocean and collect some specimen from the saltwater and compare and contrast, which was really neat. And, you know, major shout out to Carol Minahan, who was one of our chaperones, did an awesome job, Kristy Hall, we had way more girls and boys, so I had two female chaperones. Jackson's mom game, which was really nice, she spent the night and had to go to work on Tuesday, and, and myself. And then after we did this, the main outdoor learning initiative actually had the Commissioner of Education do like a grand celebration and open it, and we were the only people that had used it. So we got to go out along with some other schools, and Rebecca's here, Rebecca did a great job with the Commissioner presenting what we did. We showed a video, it wasn't this one, this one's got, this one's a little more handy and a little more fun. So we edited that video to be a little more like outdoor learning in general. You did a great job with the Commissioner of Education, and there's all these people that were there, it was really neat, along with, I think, five other schools, four, four other schools, maybe it was five of us, right?
Yeah.
And we went last, and it was cool. So let me show you this, this video, it's a little bit different than some of our camping videos in the past, and it's a lot, it was a lot of fun, and it will continue to be a lot of fun.
We follow Acton Elementary School on adventure into the wild, where the outdoors, learning and play come together as one. Students set up their camps and prepared gourmet lunches as they fuel their minds for the adventures to come. On the agenda, canoeing on the lake to collect specimen for future analysis. The young Wildcats prepare their safety systems and embark on an epic journey onto the lakefront to seek vital research collections. After the voyage, the students of Acton Elementary do in-depth research on their findings. The scientists and adventurers find a variety of natural wealth on the lake and prepare their studies to move towards Macworth Island to compare and contrast their specimen. But first, the site must be left as it was, clean, tidy, and inviting for the creatures who call the ecosystem home. The Wildcats arrive at their new outpost and set up their new research hub. Essential workstations, research supplies, and cooking tools are prepped to create a home in the wilds of Macworth Island, and home it is. To start the day, the Wildcats warm up their brains with challenging leadership courses to prepare their minds for the adventure to come. Through teamwork, resilience, and laughs, the group passes the challenge with blazing Next, the scientists go out on their excursion. The team hunts for precious research items such as seaweed, rocks, shells, and other natural resources. On their way, the students of Acton Elementary let their creativity flourish and leave handcrafted homes for the magical fairies of Macworth. After collection, the team does careful considerations regarding their specimen and meet as one to discuss their findings. Soon after, the Wildcats reflect, pack up camp, and prepare themselves for the next adventure to come. Now, let's look at some of the groundbreaking interviews from the journey.
Why are you guys excited about camping?
I get to spend time with friends in time like this.
Sandwich.
I'm making a jelly sandwich. I want peanut butter or fluff.
Who did your hair?
Um, Harper, Melody.
Hey, Mel!
I'm excited to canoeing because I haven't been in, so this is going to be interesting.
We've been to Sevago Lake, other ones?
I've been on the islands, but not on the water.
Awesome. Tell me why you like outdoor learning?
Because I got to explore things.
Or do you, most excited to explore?
Um, this lake, all around it, all nature.
Awesome. What do you like about outdoor learning?
I like the sunshine and getting to see animals.
Do you like hanging out with your friends, too?
Yeah.
Awesome. What do you like about outdoor learning?
I like just being able to see animals in nature.
What's your favorite animal?
They're not in the wild, but I would say a moose.
What do you like about outdoor learning?
Probably the experience.
What's your favorite part about the experience?
Yeah, getting to feel for it and getting other people to try new things.
Are you gonna ride in the front of the canoe today?
Probably.
Can you show me? Awesome, can you show me how you're gonna hold the paddle? Perfect. Have fun. Can you tell me your name and why you like outdoor learning?
I'm Eli, and I like outdoor learning because it's, it's a good touch, and it's just better at times.
Going great here at Sevago Lake State Park. We've been canoeing, we've been swimming, and we're getting dinner now. Spaghetti!
In a nutshell.
A memorable trip for all and a really, really good time.
Sounds like a lot of fun, and maybe a sleepless night for chaperones, that's what it sounds like to me.
About every twenty minutes, there was something that got my attention, you know?
And I think it's totally awesome that Jackson was able to be included in the canoe.
Did you see him in the canoe?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got him, and he'd never been canoeing. And I'm like, oh, and that was a little bit of a, how are we gonna do this? Because you can't, you know, you, you have a car seat, and Mom's like, he's in the water all the time, he's good, he's good. And we had a beautiful day, no wind, and it was flat, and he had a blast, and he was between myself and Adam, Adam was in the front. We had a great day.
So nobody capsized?
No, we came close. That would have been another part of the adventure, wouldn't it?
Would that have made the slideshow?
Oh, really? Oh, definitely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, I think then we're ready to move on to number four, which is progress monitoring, and now we'll turn it over to our principal, Brandon Moore.
So in lieu of the normal progress monitoring piece, I thought it would be appropriate to share kind of the end result of the entry interviews that I've been talking about up to the first couple of months. So just a reminder of what the process looked like, I apologize, some of the slides have a lot of writing, and I'll also speak about everything that's up there. So starting in August, I scheduled with staff times to come in and meet with me. I focused on teaching staff, head tech staff, and main office staff. The admin interviews, I didn't really do like sit downs with everybody, they kind of happened naturally over the first couple of months, just in conversations that, that we were having around the school. Different interview questions for new staff and returning staff, I think some of the questions asking about their experience here just don't apply to folks who are starting out brand-new like myself, so those questions looked a little different. As part of this process, I shared with staff that all of the interviews would be kept confidential. I haven't shared any of the information with folks at all. The shareout that I did do with the full staff just didn't include names, just general information, no specific comments or any other identifying information, because this process was really meant to help me get to know the folks that I hope to be working with for a little while and learn about the school itself. So some of the details, I interviewed just over forty-five staff members, and it was approximately thirty hours of interviews that I've done with everyone since beginning the process. So as I said, the question's focused on kind of the personal experience here in Acton Elementary. I asked staff to identify strengths, areas that they see for growth or improvement here as a school, what they believe some of our priorities should be moving forward. And we covered topics like parent engagement, curriculum, activity and offerings that we have for students. And then I did share all of this information with the full staff last week during our early release study, so they've all seen all of this at this point as well. So some of my takeaways, things that folks love about working here, the small community and that small school feel, the opportunity to see kids grow up over time. They feel like the school does a really great job in reaching out to families and providing information about opportunities for engagement. If families want to be engaged, they can, there are plenty of opportunities here for that. They feel that the community, the families, the PTG, staff, school board are all as willing to support them in their work, and that was mostly everyone who made those comments. Many enjoy the trust they have in the classroom, they feel like they have the freedom to do what they believe is best for kids. There's flexibility in the staff, everybody is willing to do what's needed for kids, and if you need help, there's plenty of folks willing to provide it. A lot of resources, both in people and the financial aspect of the job, especially for a small school, because that can be a challenge for sure. Support staff feel valued, they feel like they're an active and important part of the classroom, never feel minimized at all by their role. And the people here love to work here, they love the community, they love the school. Again, small classes and small school feel, they appreciate that that's something that the board and the community has agreed, that they think that is in the best interest of students, and they think the school is student-focused and centered, right? It really is about putting students first. Challenges and areas of growth, so many folks mentioned the climate and culture items, the board had the climate and culture committee as well. Things like rumors, gossip, clickiness, getting into the business of others' business, and this is just the downside of being a small school and a small community where everybody knows everybody. So it's not necessarily always a negative, it's not like people believe they're getting questions or people are asking questions because they're trying to do something negative with it, it's more of a what's going on, can I help? But sometimes that doesn't feel good for folks either. Equity and time with students, this doesn't, wasn't just about schedules, a few folks mentioned like a lack of clarity on roles and when or how they should be expected to work with students. Communication, transparency in some decision-making, improved consistency, particularly around discipline, and maybe a plan on programming and curriculum. And I have a little side note here that as the time in the school year kind of went on, some of these came up less and less, and I did prompt at times, you know, hey, this is something that I've heard about previously, and how do you feel like that's going? And folks did notice the things they felt like had improved in a couple of these areas. So I thought that was a real positive as well, but I did want to still mention them here. Some folks mentioned the need to improve options for high-end or gifted students. The primary and middle levels sometimes seem like separate places, so we should explore ways to make sure that we can bring everybody together. Sports and clubs, how do we keep offerings for students when we have such small numbers? And right now, if we're only able to offer one sport, that's all we can offer, but what other opportunities do we have for students who may want to be engaged with an after-school activity, but maybe that one sport that's being offered isn't necessarily for them? And then the need to keep and maintain quality teachers, how do we support new or beginning staff and try to keep them here in Acton? Goals and priorities, these are all clearly aligned with the same information that we just heard about growth opportunities. So continue to work on improving climate and culture, more time remembering why we love it here and less around the negative things that come up, complaining or gossiping. Consistency in that communication, transparency, decision-making, same thing with discipline, continue to keep the class size focused on keeping that small. Finding opportunities to enrich and challenge our high-end learners and enrichment opportunities for students, particularly as they get older at the middle level. What can we do to try and provide them with, I won't say elective options, because that's not always possible, but that type of thing. If kids are really interested in a specific area, how do we help them find more? Strengthening our RTI program, bridging the gap in staff, making sure people feel connected. Renewed commitment to PBIS and making sure that we have consistency in our approach from pre-k all the way through eighth grade. And the last one is around working with students as they are now, and just noting that challenges today are different than they were even three, four years ago. We all talk about the post-COVID change and, and everyone, more so in our students perhaps than anyone else, and that there may be value in finding professional development for staff about what is different with kids now and how can we continue to work. about what is different with kids now and how can we continue to work with what we have. So what do I think? Most of this wasn't surprising. I mean, small school vibes, mixed feelings on programming, curriculum implementation. That's all normal in any school setting. And so there, I think there's maybe just a need for some really clear direction and planning for why we're doing what we're doing and what we're working towards. I'll come back to that in the next slide. The communication transparency, again, every school I've ever been in, this is something that's come up. That didn't feel like it was going to be a new, nothing surprising. And I'm not surprised there's a lot to love here, kids, school. There's a lot of great people here that love what they do, and I think that shows. I put surprising question mark, the climate and culture piece. I came from a small town many, many years ago. I've worked in another small-town area. And this is not something that I was surprised to. The second piece, the comparison is the thief of joy. It's a quote from Teddy Roosevelt. That was something that I was a little bit surprised by when I was having these entry interviews. There's a lot of, I believe this about myself, I see other people, and I wonder if they're doing the same. And there's that thought of, you know, can you trust the people that you're working with that they are doing what they need to do? It's not necessary to compare what you're doing with what somebody else is doing. And I think when you do focus on that, it leads to some of the negativity in the questions. And so I shared that quote with staff, just that comparison is the thief of joy. If you spend your time comparing yourself with everybody else, you're usually not gonna be very happy. So that's just something that I made sure to note. And then now what do we do about it? I'd like you to notice the not-so-subtle capital letters, bold and underlined. This is not a me thing, it's a we thing. But some primary focus, direct areas to kind of improve some of this. The principal's climate and culture committee and a code of conduct review committee. So that's specific to student discipline. Right after this, last week when I shared it with staff, I put out an interest survey to create these two committees. And I've got volunteers, maybe six to 10 folks on each of them. And those will be picking up right after the little Thanksgiving break, where I will leave that work. Activators and staff connection, just some relationship building across the whole staff. Opportunities for folks on different ends of the building to work with each other. And one example of this would be what we did yesterday during our early release. Our art teacher, Becky Poliquin, led kind of an art collaborative that was actually, it was fantastic. Feedback from staff has been wonderful. It was an opportunity for us to decompress from the day and just spend time chatting with people that we were mixed up in different groups, people you might not see every day, doing some art-based activities. And there were a lot of smiles by the end of it. And I personally had a piece of work to put on my refrigerator when I got home for the first time in many, many years. Accentuating the positives, just reminders that we all like working here. Not a single person was like, yeah, I don't know if this place is for me. I mean, everybody loves it. So just the reminders that like, there are always going to be things you might not always like. But for the most part, this is a great place to be. And it's on us to remind each other of that. Which also includes holding each other accountable when people are complaining or gossiping. It's one thing to come in and say like, I don't like, but this is a thing that exists, and then partake in it at the next opportunity you have. So we need to remind each other that, no, we're not doing that right now. Control what you control, let go of the things that you can't. This is more specific to like the comparison piece. And then when in doubt, blame the principal. Ultimately, the buck does stop with John and I right now. And so if there are things that you don't like, you can come complain about it to us. And then you hear from us what we're going to do or not do. And at that point, you can be upset with us, but you can't keep continuing to feel negatively about that. Some secondary pieces, these are also still indirectly related to kind of the climate and culture. I just need to familiarize myself with eye rating other curriculum options and programming and find out kind of what is working well, what isn't, and then create a plan for how we're going to approach that. Schedule piece, equity of time, work with students. That's something that I'll be taking on this year as well and working with staff to kind of create something. I just wanted to highlight this means a schedule that is fair to everybody, but it doesn't always mean equal. Everybody here has a different role. You might be under the same contract, but that doesn't mean you're gonna be asking your school nurse to do the same thing you're asking a kindergarten teacher to do, right? So we need to have equity of time and work with students that's fair for everybody in their role, but it might not look the same. And then I do want to look at how we can increase opportunities for students to access their different areas of interest or areas of need. And again, particularly as the middle-level students before they leave us and move on to the high school. And then I'm pretty sure I'm not violating any copyright with my old friend, Porky the Pig. And so that's it. I'm happy to answer questions if folks have them. But I personally found this to be an incredibly rewarding process. And I learned a lot about the school. I loved everything that I learned. Still here, still smiling.
Thank you.
It was really in-depth. Thank you.
Sounds like you've gotten to learn a lot in a very short period of time.
Yeah, nothing like drinking from a fire hose.
Okay, let's move on to consent agenda. Look for motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved?
I'll second. CJ and Amanda. Any comments or any questions, discussion, all in favor? Five and O. Okay, do any of you have any questions or will go, maybe you'll go to the superintendents?
I only have four bullets tonight. Only two hours worth. Just as a reminder that, you know, fall's kind of passing by. We're heading into the holidays and trunk or treat was awesome. It was our October, you know, highlight. It was really great this year. The day was perfect. A lot of people showed up and PTG just really helped out a ton getting that together for our community. PT conferences, parent-teacher conferences are next week, just to note for everybody, Wednesday and Thursday. We heard from soccer tonight, they've ended their season, and basketball has started. And we're fortunate to have both a girls and a boys team. And they've been practicing starting last week. It's really nice to have the gym busy in the afternoons as it gets dark so early in the day and they're playing basketball, and it really feels like winter sports are coming along. And lastly, note that it's before our next meeting, but it's the same week. On 12/10 at 6:00 PM will be the winter concert, always a big favorite in the community. We're standing room only as always, and we look forward to that. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Put that in my calendar. Do any of you have any questions for any of the administrators on their reports or for Mr. Ross?
Andy, you mentioned replacing one of the water bottle machines.
Yes.
How long do they usually last?
Well, this is the first one that we've had issues with. And I was hoping it was gonna be something that we could repair, but it was like a condenser.
Yeah.
And it was leaking and the cost of replacing that part, it was just, it was too much. So I've ordered a new one.
Because it's gotta be about four years. Because we had them all installed the fall of 2020.
Was it the most used one?
That one, that one, $32,000.
Wow.
So that's one of five, so they do get used a ton.
Yeah. Definitely worth it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
Is Joe O'Dean has been back?
He has. He finished up his room audits for those that wanted him. So the new staff had room audits. Staff that moved had room audits because there are new rooms. And then anybody who wanted to do another room audit, we finished yesterday. We did three yesterday, and I'll be mentioning Joe later under new business in a form that we need to schedule.
Any other questions or anybody? All right then, let's move on to number seven. And we'll begin with policy committee reports.
So this month we had just a couple that were just no updates at all. A couple more that were just switching board to committee. I wanted to point out in BBA that we, you know, put such a high priority on student safety that we wanted to make sure we put that into the responsibilities of the school committee.
Yeah.
So to play the part of Mary, who's sitting in the audience. I noticed just like, like the spacing, the way that word safety sits in there. It kind of sits on its own line.
Because that's important.
It's important.
No, but it's great.
Andy's got coffee. Jackie's also a stickler on those things, so I'm sure that'll get.
Oh, that'll get coffee.
That's why it sits like that.
Because it's so important.
It's so important.
It needs its own line.
I had the feeling you would have done it even if Mary wasn't here, her camera. She would have saw it eventually.
Okay.
Okay. So then we're looking at five reviews. So I would look for a motion, first of all, to accept as reviewed BB, school committee legal status. BBA, school committee powers and responsibilities. BBD, school committee declared vacancy card by absenteeism. BBT, unexpired term fulfillment. And BDA, annual organization meeting.
So the others, I'm gonna look to the policy committee to ask if six through eight, seven, six through eight, are those brand-new policies for first read?
That's what I'm looking at.
I think they're meant to be reviewed.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna.
Judy could just add those. Those are reviewed. Those are not brand-new.
Yeah, the only ones.
There's no first read.
Yeah, so seven, one through seven, eight are all reviewed.
It just didn't have the review on it.
Yeah.
So the others then would be BBD, school committee superintendent relationship. BDF, advisory committee to the school committee.
Yes.
And BEA, school committee use of electronic communication.
That is correct, yes.
They're all reviewed.
So I'll look for a motion to review, to accept as reviewed, all of those policies.
So moved?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now we're looking at two for a second read. JJIBD, which is gender identity participation. And GBFAAR, exposure control plan.
Wait a sec, sorry. I think something got mistranslated again. Because we, it's.
There's an I in the middle of them.
Yeah, it is. And this was in the minutes from last month. It just didn't get put on the agenda again. It should be JJIBD.
JJIBD.
Yeah.
So the agenda was incorrect.
The agenda is incorrect, the policy itself is correct. Yeah. And it just, it just typo.
Yep.
There's too many letters. IBD, okay.
Okay, so we'll look for a motion to accept those two as a second read.
So moved?
I'll second.
We moved and seconded? Any further discussion?
Did we read the second policy? The lettering? I just wanted to make sure that was.
You mean JJIIBD?
Oh, wait, this one, something's wrong here too. Hang on. No, hang on. GBE.
GBFAAR, exposure control.
Oh, yeah, because it says GBG on the paper.
GBFAA.
That's the law that lenders.
Oh, right.
So was this another?
We didn't catch that last month, though.
GBG.
Yeah.
Oh, instead of F.
I tell you what you can make if you want, because Jen's gonna be taking the minutes from the video. You can make a motion to pass as second read the exposure control plan, because the policy's there.
Okay.
With the idea that the lettering and the coding get corrected. And that way we don't have to look at it tonight.
Yep, okay. Yes, so I move that we accept for a second read policy, the gender identity participation policy, JJIIBD. And the exposure control plan for bloodborne pathogens, GBGAAR.
You got it.
Okay.
Okay.
I second it.
Not whatever's written on the agenda.
All in favor? Okay, now we're going to settle two long-range planning.
So we met and Matt gave us a very nice detailed plan of all the technology pieces that he's looked over that we haven't focused on in the past with all of the wonderful things that the town has passed for this school. With the various things, he's looked at, like the costs of new interactive flat panels for the classrooms to replace some of these aging projectors. Networking, phones, servers, firewalls, how our data is stored, the NutriKids server, computer replacements for ed techs, and some other kind of software things like updating Google Workspace to a plus version. So everything that he's looked at is coming in at almost a half a billion dollars. But included in his report is different ways of getting funding, which may help with that through grants and foundations and there's a program out there that helps him find grants and foundations also for this cost. So we're getting together our handy little chart and our five-year plan. And next meeting, we're gonna figure out our priorities and how we might want to allocate to get the things done.
Is he, is he a grant writer as well? Or did he, he's just looking for them?
I didn't really get the impression that he was a grant writer. I didn't ask specifically, but he did mention one of the programs that helps write the grants for the things that you need. And even some of them were specifically for rural schools that need technology upgrades. So it kind of sounds promising.
Good.
Yeah. I got it all, right?
You got it all. Good job. Considering we just had the meeting, so, good job.
Any questions for our long-range planning committee?
That sounds like a long-range.
And the sidewalks have not been forgotten. Andy's on it.
I'll believe it when I see it. All right, let's move on then to number eight, new business, CDS and three-year-olds.
You got it. I just wanted a few passes around and then any actors can go into the audience. I wanted to remind the committee that CDS, and Sharon's gonna help me with it, so we can kind of plug and play here together. We haven't rehearsed a thing, but Sharon knows all about this. But it's really something that's out on the horizon a couple of years from now. So CDS is a, it's really a service to students with, that have IEP disabilities from I think it's birth to five, but schools will now be picking up three-year-olds to five-year-olds. And that's a four-year phase-in process, and there's a lot here for you to take a look at. The first cohort that signed up as schools, and I believe there's 17 schools in the state of Maine that are moving in this direction already. They're taking three-year-olds that have IEPs, really anything from an IEP that might be speech to a student with, you know, multiple disabilities that has more needs. And schools are gonna pick that up, and really it's because schools are best positioned for that kind of situation where CDS doesn't have a school, they're a program, and they're a service provider. So the 17 schools that are in it now are 100% funded through the state department of ed. And that funding is supposed to be in place moving forward. And it's basically, I'm gonna guess, it wasn't said in the webinar I went to, that it's the money that would flow towards CDS is going to flow towards public schools. I'm a big proponent of never be the first one to raise your hand on a new program. So cohort one, we discussed that cohort one is in business now. And they were on the webinar explaining how it's going. And as, like anything, the state is, we're building the airplane while it's flying, was their metaphor. And they're learning a lot as they go. So cohort two is sizing up. They want to get involved, want to get involved this next year. The application to get involved is due in February. We're not looking at that for Acton. However, is next year, Mr. Ward's gonna be doing an internship with me and will be doing a lot of super. doing a lot of superintendent work and it would be a great project for he and I to do together to take a look at what do we need to do here in Acton. So Sharon, if I could just look to you for a moment and say, if that were to happen today, we know our numbers of our three-year-olds and we have a pre-K program that outdates me, you did that the year before I showed up, a lot of schools don't have pre-K. So they need to build a three and four-year-old program. We really need to look at how are we going to service three-year-olds. So what would our numbers be Sharon if we were in fact doing it out?
Well, I looked it up today and we currently have four students who would be three-year-olds next year. One is currently being evaluated and the other three are awaiting evaluations. So I don't even know if those four three-year-olds will be eligible or have IEPs, but what I'm going to do now that this, this is really on the forefront for you as a board to be thinking about for the future, every month I'll take a look in sync, which is their database system, and I will see how we're doing, how we're progressing, if more kids are added so that I can know, you know, these are the numbers of kids that would, if we were to be in that cohort group, we'd have three kids and this is what they need. Or we'd have two kids and this is what they need. So we'll always know what's coming. So it's right at my fingertips, I can see it, I just need to make sure that I monitor it on a regular basis, so.
And just to be clear, this is not all three-year-olds. This is only three-year-olds with IEPs.
Right. And all four of them are being referred because I do, I'm able to look at the referral, I'm able to look at the referral source. Two of them are parent referrals, two of them are referrals by doctors, like physicians, and all four of them are speech.
Okay, okay.
Anytime you want to interject a question, I don't really have much more to say, so go ahead.
That was my question too. This isn't, we aren't, we aren't taking in all three-year-olds.
Correct.
Only three-year-olds that have an IEP.
I will say, can I say something?
Yes, please, yes.
We do this together.
I will say that down the road, you know, as this progresses, if you get more kids, that what we used to do in New Hampshire, because this has been in place in New Hampshire for years back when I was a director, is we would bring in typically developing peers. So we would do what's called reverse mainstreaming so that we would have, if we only had like four kids on IEPs, we would bring in four typicals so that it would kind of like be an experience very similar to what they would get in a public school. So we call that reverse mainstreaming where they have access to typically developing peers and that's really good for their, for modeling and, and, you know, communication and social skills. But that would be down the road because, you know, you're going to be thinking like they're going to be talking about space issues, you know, where, where if we would be doing it here in Acton School or if we would be contracting with someplace like Barnyard, for instance, you, you could do something like that where you could buy some spots from her and then you could have the kids go there. There's all kinds of options that you can be doing.
So instead of having the kids in the school here, we could pay for a spot at a daycare that could provide some services too?
And if a kid went to Barnyard and they were three and they only needed speech, we could send a speech path into Barnyard to provide that service right there.
Right, yeah.
So there's all kinds of options. Like when I was in Portland, I used to, you know, contract with Head Start, I used to contract with, we had a lot of pre-K providers, you know, in Portland and same with Rochester, you know, so we don't have to be always thinking about it being in our facility, it can be out there.
So is this, you go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say with your example of like maybe they only needed speech, we wouldn't be picking up just the cost of speech, we'd be picking up the cost of a full day?
No, just the cost of speech is what we would be responding to.
So would, in this example, why would we be buying spots at a daycare?
Oh, that would be if they needed.
If they needed, okay, yes, okay, got it.
No, if they needed more.
If they were already there and they needed speech.
So if, if they just needed just speech, we have speech pathologists here who come, are they here all day or are they just?
They come on their own schedule.
Well, we have, we have one now that's here all day because she's also providing the pre-K kids.
Okay. And then, you know, I know we have children who are homeschooled who come in just for speech. So would it be a similar thing like that?
We could offer that too.
Parent or whoever, that could be an option where the parent would just bring the child in for speech and then.
Transportation costs, so we'll pay them like, what is it, 67 cents a mile to bring them in.
Yeah, okay.
I think one of the keys to this and Sharon, your questions led right to it, Sharon answered it perfectly. If you look at this new law includes the following provisions, the second one down speaks of education services provided by the SAU through SAU-run public preschool programs, contracted partnerships with private preschools, Head Start programs, licensed childcare settings with preschools, or collaborative combination. So it leaves like a lot of flexibility in there, but it's our duty. We become the school that's responsible for these IEPs. And the deadline is, the law July 1st, 2028. So there's four cohort groups, one's already in action, one is learning from that first one. That webinar was last Thursday. I foresee Mr. Ward and I really looking at what works, what doesn't work, and how could we make that work in Acton and maybe jumping in on that last group. Right now, the funding, the way it's set up is 100% for every child that you're servicing. Outside of the state subsidy, outside of our regular funding, the ED 279 form, this wouldn't affect that. It wouldn't affect the state subsidy, so it's a total different funding system for that. You know, that being said, as long as things don't change, we're really feeling we're looking at small numbers here, you know, in Acton and we'll know they're coming and we can plan for that. I think we're poised well to really take care of this, but I want to learn from others and take our time and because Mr. Ward's coming on and we need a project, it's perfect timing and we'll both learn together about how are we going to pull this off.
Yeah.
And it's going to be one 800, Sharon, no matter where she lives. She could go to Europe and we're still going to be calling Sharon, obviously it's work because she has so much experience and is so good at all of this, so. I wanted to put it out there, if you're interested, I can send you the link, just tell me later, I can, or you can email me. I mean, it gets down to the nitty-gritty about how you bill and the webinar, I was going to show you parts of it and we talked, we thought probably not appropriate to have you sit through all this, but the minutia of it is, it's interesting, like with cohort two, they'll do a child count for funding in August, then they'll do it with the October child count report that we have to do, that we're mandated to do October 1st, and that's your number. And if your number goes down, you still receive that funding, which I think is pretty cool. And if your number goes up, you'll get additional funding. So they've really put some thought into this so that it doesn't break the bank and I thought that's, that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Because there are schools, I want to remind you, there are schools that don't have public pre-K.
Yeah.
So they have to figure out three and four, we just need to figure out three.
Right down the road, they don't have it. Sanford 60.
They don't have it over, is that Noble?
Noble. They don't have pre-K over the public.
So they got a little more to think about.
Sanford has a lottery for a couple of, yeah, schools, but everybody can't get in.
So we'll keep you posted. There will be, next year, I'm sure Mr. Ward and I will be saying to you, there's, there's some rules we need, you know, to put together a committee, we need to have certain people on that committee, we need to study some things, we need to fill out some forms, and that work is all going to be set by a timeline by the state. And we'll be looking for the school committee support to move us through that and you make the right policy decisions to support Acton in regards to how this law will be implemented. So I want to thank Sharon for jumping in. We share, we share an office, so we just kind of organically talked today and, and thought we could probably explain this better than we could put a PowerPoint up, which is easier to do this way.
Yeah.
We tried to keep you involved in my weekly updates with this, but I want you to know that next year is, we're really going to hit the ground running on this. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Community safety.
You mentioned Joe Jordan, just for the audience and for anybody who may not know Joe. Joe is the school, one of those school resource officers in Sanford. He's awesome. He's very, very good, very approachable, very good with adult learning. He's worked with us now for over a year and a half and getting us into a place where we really have followed the ALICE protocols and Joe has really dovetailed the ALICE protocols and the safety in a way that works for Acton and we added some things as he's grown and learned and he's been on the national stage with school safety, he's doing really, really well. And we're, he does it for free. We haven't paid Joe a cent. I mean, we kind of passed, got a gift certificate last year at the end of the year and thanked him, but he has a situation with Sanford and I talked, you know, I corresponded with Sanford and at the time the chief was okay with him coming up here because he's being paid and considering a neighbor helping a neighbor. So Joe's been a great resource to us. We did a community forum about a year ago. Some of you were there and it was well-attended.
Yeah.
And we're looking to do another one, especially since parents will be getting an email from me probably the beginning of next week because a week from today we'll be starting our safety drills. We call them safety drills, we don't call them lockdown, we understand what trauma and foreign language is, especially with our youngest kids. But we're going to start in a very traditional manner with our safety drills in that it'll be a shelter-in-place model, that's what kids are familiar with, but then we're going to add the components of the ALICE training that we've been trained in and give age-appropriate training to kids. Four-year-olds, I don't see that it's going to change much other than we may practice leaving the building at a time that we're not expected to leave the building. What might that look like? That might look fun, that might look different for a four-year-old. Maybe in fifth and sixth grade, we're helping and learning or at least talking about how we might barricade a door because that's the world we live in and we've been trained in. We don't want to have an unfortunate situation happen in Acton Elementary School and the kids that don't even have any idea what's going on. So with this next safety drill, it's shelter-in-place, but I might, we're going to talk about this on Monday with the cohort leader meeting. Joe and I discussed having a conversation while we're sheltering in place. Instead of being quiet and being in the corner, we all know it's a drill, the parents know it's a drill, it's announced. As we move through the year, we'll do unannounced ones, we'll see how we do. But I can envision third-grade teachers talking to the kids about, well, right now if we were in a situation where we had some safety concerns, what would we be doing? And kind of going through some scenarios, just like what might this look like if it was different? And talking through and making it almost like lesson planning. And the reason I think this is important, when we first started doing PBIS, we wrote lesson plans and we taught the expectations. Why wouldn't we teach the expectations of safety? So it really does line up well with our PBIS thinking and our past practice with that. So that's it, kind of in a nutshell of where we're going. I'd like to pick an evening that works for us and the night of the concert is off the table and the school committee December date is off the table, but I'm wondering, Joe, I asked Joe, I said, open your calendar and tell me a night you can't do it, and he said, I'll do it any night you want to do it. So I don't have any blackout dates for Joe, but we have, in December, we have the, the evening of the 10th won't work and the evening of the, the school committee looks like it's going to meet on the 12th. That week, the 10th and the 12th doesn't work, so I might ask the school committee to consider maybe the week of the 16th, but not the, not the 17th. My mother's going to be 92 pretty soon and I'd like to go to that birthday party.
That's allowed, we'll allow it.
She needs to be there.
That, that's just a night I need to be out, so, and then, we're getting awfully close, yeah, I think we're on, I think we're on break like that Friday, so we could do it before, we could do it early in December, or we could do it as late as the 17th. What would be your preference, school committee?
I'm open.
You're open. Want me to talk to Joe, pick a date and email you?
Yep.
And then I'll get right on getting the community forum together?
I'm out of town the first week in December.
And that's okay. It's not a mandatory thing that the school committee be here, I just wanted to make sure we lined it up with your calendars if you could be here.
Cool.
Because I assume it's going to attract, last time it attracted a lot of interest and we had great reviews. Like I said, Joe's a good presenter. And we've added some things and I think it's important for people to understand what we've added. We have the safety plan that you approved, that there's a lot of pieces about that that needs to be kept quiet, but there's a lot of pieces about that we can talk about, which I think would be important.
So what, so what dates would, would be the next week after the school committee meeting?
It would be the week of Monday, the 16th, and the 17th is not one of them that we could probably do. So you have Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday of that week. I'd suggest staying away from a Friday.
Yeah, we could do.
How about Thursday?
Thursday's fine.
Thursday.
Thursday, the 19th, perhaps 6:00 PM.
I don't have my phone tonight, so I can't plug it in.
Okay. How about we put that as a pencil date? I'll confirm with you via email and then we'll move forward as soon as you confirm that date and I'll get Joe lined up.
Okay.
Excellent.
It would be good too if, when we're getting ready to do this, to have, to have Dan that does the announcements for the town, to have that date included in there so that it wouldn't just, would hit people besides just parents.
The emails, the newsletter?
Yeah, the newsletter. Yeah, the town newsletter.
A lot of the safety forum, for those of you out here at the meeting tonight, is not, it's situational awareness, it's not just about school safety. It's about safety in your life and that gut feeling and you walk into Walmart and something doesn't seem right and what to look for and clues. And I had a teacher, a new teacher here who worked with Joe in the room audit and she did the early training with us this year and she said to him, and she, and she has a brand-new baby and she's like, I have learned so much, I now, when I go out and I look around, I am just, I'm not paranoid, but I look for things and I think about things differently because of the training that I had. And I thought, in the world that we live, not a bad idea, so having community come and it doesn't have to be school-focused, it will be, but you can use these tools in any place in your life and I think it's important. Okay, I think that wraps it up.
That sounds good.
New business.
All right then, if there's nothing else, we will.
Just the basketball schedule, if you're going to do it on the 19th, I don't know if they have a game or not.
Well, yeah, good, good, good point. Two things, one, the team, if the team's away, the parents might be with the teams.